Lot harder, lot harder. The Board will now come to order.
The Board will now come to order.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Madam Kirk, please call the roll.
Alderman Trup. Alderman Flowers. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderman Hubbard. Alderman Young. Alderman Conway. Alderman Ortman. Alderman Vollmer. Alderman Villa. Alderman Arnowitz. Alderman Wessels. Alderman Howard. Alderman Florida. Alderman Behringer. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderman Davis. Alderman Schmid. Alderman French. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vacaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cohn. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Carter. Alderman Cruzen. President Reed. Alderman Flowers. Alderman Moore. Alderman Hubbard. Alderman Young. Alderman Ortman. Alderman Vollmer. Alderman Wessels. Alderman Howard. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Davis. Alderman French. Alderman Vacaro. Alderman Cruzen. Twenty present.
Quorum being present, we will be led today in prayer by Rabbi Randy Fleischer from Central Reform Congregation. Let's give a round of applause to Gabriel, his son, who helped bring us to order today.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Board, for inviting me here and for letting Gabe Gavelus into order. This is a special weekend, a holy weekend, these days leading up to the national holiday to honor Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. It's a day that's supposed to remind us of justice and righteousness, of working for peace. And this year coincides with the inauguration of the second term of President Obama. There's another confluence that happens this time of year in Jewish synagogues, which is right around Dr. King's birthday and holiday. We are in the middle of reading the story in the Torah of the Exodus of the Hebrew slaves out of Egypt and into the Promised Land. It's a story that teaches us what a prophet is. A prophet is someone who speaks truth to power. Because Moses faced the Pharaoh, this powerful, strong Pharaoh, and said, "Let my people go." And so, we have it within us to be prophets as well, to speak the truth to power. The rabbis asked, "What was the difference between Moses and the Pharaoh?" And they answer their own questions. Rabbis are good at that, answering their own questions. The rabbis said the difference was, is that Pharaoh used God, but Moses let God use him. And maybe that's my prayer for all of us, for public servants, for all humanity. We should let God use us for godliness, for goodness, for righteousness, equality, and justice, and inclusion, all of those things that we work for in our daily lives, all the things that this body helps the city become a better place. And so, let us be like Moses, like Dr. King, and not like Pharaoh. Let God use us, and let us be servants for the greater good. Amen.
Give them one more round of applause. That was a beautiful. Rabbi Fleischer is actually the rabbi for Dave Sweeney, here, our attorney at the Board of Alderman Hall. Introduction of honored guests. Any introduction of honored guests? Alderman from the 23rd.
Yes, I'd like to have my honored guest Gary Otten from the Painters, Steve Spreck from the Communication Workers, Celeste Reader from the Realtors, and I think I saw Frank Cullen, and that would be my guests.
Alderman from the 16th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I would like to have as my special guest today, Mr. Mike Lavoy with Communication Workers. And I'd also like to have as my special guest, my constituent, Gary Best, the Parks Director.
Alderman from the 8th.
Mr. President, I have as my guest today, former Alderman Jimmy Matthews. Thank you.
Alderman from the 25th.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to welcome today as my honored guest, Joanne Williams from the Carpenters, Chris Pickle and Leroy Grant from AT&amp;T Family, and my good friend Gary Best as well from the Parks Department. And also, I'm not sure if this introduction has been made yet, but Nick J.C. Pister from the Post Dispatch is also with us today. He's now covering City Hall.
Alderman from the 14th.
Good morning, Mr. President. I'd like to have for my special guest Gary Otten from the Painters District Council, number two. Thank you.
Alderman from the 7th.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I'd like to have as my guest today Susan Trautman from Great Rivers Greenway, and with her is Larry Cooper, who is an intern there from Lindenwood College, but originally from North Carolina, and Peter Sortino from Washington University.
Alderman from the 24th.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to welcome again Luke Sappa, a St. Louis University student.
Any further introductions? Any further introductions? Alderman from the 10th, like wraps up.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. Today, January 18th is National Roget Thessars Day, so I figured I'd help you folks out. While most of you were being hypnopompic this morning, I was ruminating over which topic/points/issues to confabulate about, but in the interest/concern of ephemerality, I cogitated optimum to remain taciturn. That means I was gonna sit down and be quiet while you guys were sleeping this morning. Thank you.
Before we proceed, I see some camera people here today. I'm not sure what you guys are here for or anything, but be careful how you wander around the floor, because I don't want you in violation of our rules, because we have, you know, specific areas set out for media and things of that nature. But I think they're out here today to help the Alderman from the 25th, so we'll let them continue. Anything, any further introductions? Any further introductions? Approval in the minutes? Approval in the minutes? We have none? Madam Clerk? We have none?
We have none.
All right. Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in Sections A and B of the Agenda and C of the Agenda, and have been placed in all Alderman's mailboxes.
With dispensable line items seven, would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? With dispensable line items eight through 10, first reading of board bills.
Board Bill 284, sponsored by Alderman Bosley, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service authorizing the 2013 St. Louis Works and the 50/50 Sidewalk Programs containing a public work and emergency clause. Board Bill 285, sponsored by Alderman Flowers, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service authorizing and directing the Department of Streets to enter into a contract between the city and Union Electric Company, doing business as Ameren Missouri for street and outdoor lighting services for certain facilities within the territorial limits of the city, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 286, sponsored by Alderman Wessels, and ordinance authorizing the St. Louis City Board of Election Commissioners upon approval of the Board of Estment and Apportionment to expend any funds received by the City Board of Election Commissioners from the Voting System grant for assistance in meeting and maintaining Title III requirements listed in HAVA Public Law, and from the MCVR Voter List Efficiency Grant for assistance in approving and utilizing the Missouri Centralized Voter Registration System to fulfill the obligations of said grant, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 287, sponsored by Alderman Wessels, and ordinance approving petition of owner of real property to establish a community improvement district, establishing the Union Station Community Improvement District containing a severability clause. Board Bill 288, sponsored by Alderman Wessels, and ordinance authorizing the execution of a cooperation agreement and authorizing reimbursement in accordance therewith, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 289, sponsored by Alderman Behringer, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to amend Section 1 of Ordinance 69237 revising the legal description of the East West Alley in City Block 6190, bounded by Chippewa, Donovan, and Lansdowne. That's the extent of our first readings.
Reference to committee.
To the Ways and Means Committee Board Bills 286, 287, and 288, to the Streets Committee Board Bills 284, 285, and 289. That's the extent of reference to committees.
Second reading.
Following board bills were reported out of Ways and Means Committee Board Bill 160, Committee Substitute, sponsored by President Reed, Alderman Moore, Kennedy, French, and Ogilvy, Williamson, and Bosley, and ordinance pertaining to mortgage foreclosure intervention containing a penalty, severability, and emergency clauses. Following board bills were reported out of Housing Committee, Board Bill 280, Committee Substitute, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, and ordinance designating a portion of the city as a redevelopment area known as the St. Louis Innovation District Redevelopment Area, containing a severability clause. Board Bill 281, Committee Substitute, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, and ordinance affirming adoption of a redevelopment plan, redevelopment area, redevelopment project between the city and St. Louis Innovation District, containing a severability clause. The following board bills were reported out of Transportation and Commerce Committee, Board Bill 261, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, and ordinance recommended by the Airport Commission and the Board of Estment and Apportionment, repealing certain ordinances pertaining to the regulation of and schedule of fees and charges for ground transportation operators containing severability and emergency clause. Board Bill 262, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, and ordinance authorizing directing the issuance by the city of its airport revenue refunding bond, Series 2013 Lambert Airport, in aggregate principal amount not to exceed $37,500,000, containing a severability clause. Board Bill 263, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, and ordinance recommended and approved by the Airport Commission to Comptroller and the Board of Estment and Apportionment, making certain findings with respect to the transfer of $13,727,769 of excess monies that the city intends to transfer from Debt Service Stabilization Fund to the Airport Revenue Fund containing a severability and an emergency clause. Board Bill 264, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, and ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the Director of Airports and the Comptroller to enter into and execute on behalf of the city a lease agreement, AL 226, between the city and Jet Link St. Louis, containing a severability and an emergency clause. Board Bill 276, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, and ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the Director of Airports and the Comptroller to enter into and execute a Lambert Airport lease agreement, AL 230, between the city and the Kleve Venture Corporation, containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill 277, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the Director of Airports and the Comptroller to enter into and execute, modification number four, to the Lambert Airport land lease between the city and the United States of America, containing an emergency clause. That's the extent of our second reading.
With dispensable line items 14 through 16, third reading consent.
Board Bills 235, 236, 251, 252, 97, 233, 259, and 247.
Alderman from the 13th, you recognize on the motion for the third reading consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I move for perfection of the aforementioned bills and a consent calendar.
Moved by Alderman from the 13th, second by Alderman from the 12th. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Trup. Alderman Flowers. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderman Hubbard. Alderman Young. Alderman Conway. Alderman Ortman. Alderman Vollmer. Alderman Villa. Alderman Arnowitz. Alderman Wessels. Alderman Howard. Alderman Florida. Alderman Behringer. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderman Davis. Alderman Schmid. Alderman French. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vacaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cohn. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Carter. Alderman Cruzen. President Reed. Alderman Trup. Alderman Conway. Alderman Ortman. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Davis. Twenty-four, aye votes.
By your vote, you stay in the motion. Alderman from the 13th, and third read, and finally pass the aforementioned bills. Third reading, report of engrossments.
That's the extent of third reading consent. Third reading, report of engrossment. Board Bill 258, sponsored by Alderman Young, Alderman Bosley, Conway, Alderman Howard, Alderman Florida, Alderman Rhodey, Carter, Alderman Cruzen, President Reed, and Alderman Ortman, and ordinance relating to parks subject to the approval of voters, an additional three sixteenths of one cent sales tax on all retail sales made, containing an interpretation clause, a severability clause, and an emergency clause.
Alderman from the 7th, you recognize on third reading, and finally passage of Board Bill number 258.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I move for final passage of Board Bill 258.
Moved by Alderman from the 7th, second by Alderman from the 20th. Alderman, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the bill that would put on the ballot for the voters in April, Proposition P. Proposition P is, as the clerk read, a three sixteenths sales tax on everything other than food and prescription drugs, which would bring in revenue to the city of St. Louis, estimated to be $2.5 million in additional funding for our parks, as well as it would provide money to back some bonds so that we could make improvements to the arch grounds, and it would provide money to Great Rivers Greenway so that we could continue to build out the trail system that has been planned for the region. In addition to our participation in this effort, there would also be a joint effort by St. Louis County to do so as well, providing the same benefits for their community. With both participating, we would generate a lot of improvements in our community, and with that, I renew my motion.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? It's been moved by Alderman from the 7th, second by Alderman from the 20th, that we third reading, finally pass Board Bill number 258. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Trup. Alderman Flowers. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderman Hubbard. Alderman Young. Alderman Conway. Alderman Ortman. Alderman Vollmer. Alderman Villa. Alderman Arnowitz. Alderman Wessels. Alderman Howard. Alderman Florida. Alderman Behringer. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderman Davis. Alderman Schmid. Alderman French. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vacaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cohn. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Carter. Alderman Cruzen. President Reed. Alderman Trup. Alderman Ortman. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Davis. Twenty, aye votes, three no votes, one present.
By your vote, you stay in the motion. Alderman from the 7th, and third read, and finally pass Board Bill number 258.
That's the extent of third reading, report of engrossment.
We also have Vernon Betts with us today. Thank you for coming out, Vernon. Let's give him one. And anybody else that... Oh, how you doing? Thanks for coming out today. I'll be here all day naming people now, see. Report of enrollment.
Board Bills 235, 236, 251, 252, 97, 233, 259, 247, and 258.
All other business being suspended, the President shall in open session affix his signature heretofore, to the end that these may become law. Alderman.
I'd be remiss if I didn't have... I have two special guests today. One is Shane Cohn, and other than Alderman, Terry Kennedy. Thank you.
I move for adoption of a current resolution calendar. I entertain a second on that motion. Second by Alderman from the 15th. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. First reading resolutions.
Resolution 223, sponsored by Alderman Bosley, Alderman Young, Alderman Wessels, Alderman Davis, Alderman Schmid, Boyd, Ogilvy, Cohn, and Trup. The Board of Alderman supports the continuation of the Missouri State Historic Rehabilitation Tax Credit Program at current 2012 funding levels and in its current 2012 form until such a time as it ceases to provide the benefits enumerated above.
Alderman from the 3rd, you recognize for the first reading of Resolution number 223.
Mr. President, members of the committee, Board Bill 223 is so vitally important to the continuation of development and investment in the city of St. Louis, and I'm formally requesting that we send Resolution 223 to the committee so that we might get all of the information out to the governor, particularly what those tax credits mean to the development of the city, and ultimately what it's gonna mean to the city of St. Louis. So, I would request that we send it to the committee of your choice.
Okay. Would you like to... Were you trying to send it to your committee?
Well, if you can send it to my committee, I'd like that, but I don't know whether we could do that.
No, we're gonna send it... We'll send it over to HUDs. I didn't know what... I wasn't clear which way you wanted to make that motion. It's been moved by Alderman from the 3rd that we assign Resolution number 223 to HUDs, and I entertain a second on that motion. Second by Alderman from the 15th. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. All right, thanks, Alderman. Madam Clerk, please assign Resolution number 223 to HUDs.
So noted. That's the extent of our first reading of resolutions.
Second reading.
Resolution 211, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, Williamson, Cohn, Vacaro, Young, and Behringer. The Board of Alderman calls upon the appropriate departments of the city government to commission a disparity study to establish the continuing legal validity of its minority and women business enterprise program and its workforce diversity goals.
Alderman from the 18th, you recognize on second reading, Resolution number 211.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the Board. I ask for unanimous consent.
Hearing no objection. Alderman, please proceed.
I move for adoption of Resolution 211.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 18th. I entertain a second on that motion. Second by Alderman from the 12th. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the Board. Resolution 211 does exactly what is mentioned there. It directs the various departments of the city to conduct a disparity study, or see to that a disparity study is going to be done. This will be done through SLDC. They testified in the committee that this will be done in cooperation with both the county and MSD, so the city will not be taking on the full brunt of the expenses for this particular disparity study. The study is necessary to be able to set goals for MBE and WBE, minority participation goals. The disparity will show the actual numbers of disparity in the city related to women business enterprises and minority business enterprises, which is necessary when you want to pass legislation related to those types of programs and activities. So, the Resolution 211 simply directs the various departments of the city to conduct this disparity study. There were some other cosponsors of the resolution? I don't remember hearing all of them.
Yes, Williamson, Cohn, Vacaro, Young, and Behringer.
And Reed.
And Reed. We had French. Yeah, Reed as well, the president. We had French. Schmid. Flowers. Moore. Carter. Hubbard. I thought we had Ogilvy from the committee as well.
And Howard. And Howard.
And Howard. And Boyd.
And Boyd.
And Florida.
And Florida. And Davis.
And Davis. There also have.
Who was it? Arnowitz?
Arnowitz.
And with that, Mr. President, I would renew my motion.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 18th, second by Alderman from the 12th, that we pass Resolution number 211. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. Alderman from the 23rd.
I was gonna ask if we could do that in bank.
If you would like to make the motion, I'll entertain a second on the motion.
I'd like to make a motion. We do that in bank.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 23rd that we pass Resolution number 211 in bank. I entertain a second on that motion. Second by Alderman from the 22nd. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please make that amendment. Resolution number 211 is now in bank.
So noted. That's the extent of second reading of resolutions.
But this... Miss Lane, it's unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements?
The office is closed on Monday, Martin Luther King holiday. Wednesday, Housing Committee meeting, 10:00 a.m. in the Kennedy Room. Thursday, Legislation Committee meeting, 10:00 a.m. in the Leisure Room. Friday, Full Board meeting, 10:00 a.m. in the Chambers. That's the extent of my announcements.
Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the 19th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. My first announcement is to the Alderman of the Fourth Ward, who has to listen to me closer as I support him in his ward and his endeavors and achievements in the last years of his representation of the Fourth Ward. All of us have challenges, and all of us will continue to have some challenges, but I think the only way that we can achieve them and solve them and resolve them...
I think the only way that we can achieve them and solve them and resolve them is that we work and support each other, and that is why I made my comments, to give that announcement to the Fourth Ward Alderman today. My other announcements, we are having our Create the Peace event this Saturday at the Innovative Concept Academy. We'll have the workshop for young people to create their signs to march in the Martin Luther King Parade. They will create signs, they will discuss various topics about crime and how to create peace within their world. They also will be presenting a video that they just produced the last couple of weeks where their topic is bullying, and so you'll have a chance to listen to that. And we're also gonna carry this series through the year, and they will have different topics on our public access station with the teenagers trying to address their community and make it better. They will march in the parade, and then they will come to Dante's on Olive at Compton, and we will have a session there for them. It is being sponsored by the 100 Black Men, St. Louis Community Empowerment Foundation, Salvation Army, AKAs, and Deltas, KDA Foundation, some other folks. But last year, we had about 600 youth. We hope to have more this year, and I invite you to come out, talk to them, encourage them, and all that. And I also wanted to give a congratulations to Anita Banks for the presentation that will be done on behalf of Senator Jeb Banks with an image at the Black History Museum in his honor. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from 13th, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to excuse the Alderman from the 9th and 17th wards due to necessary absence.
Moved by Alderman from 13th, second by Alderman from 11th. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. Alderman from 13th, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adjourn the meeting until Friday, 10:00 a.m., January 25th.
Moved by Alderman from 13th, second by Alderman from 11th. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose. Stand adjourned.